All right, calling the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I need to do the roll call first.
Okay, even better.
Chair Robarts.
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzgerald.
Here.
Board Member Latauski is absent. Board Member Newsina is absent. Board Member Edmondson.
Present.
Board Member Hayes.
Here.
Board Member Clements.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cool. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Anyone have any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda? If not, can I ask for everyone who wants to approve the agenda? Anyone opposed?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ian.
I'll second.
Whoever's. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it, okay. Approval of the minutes of, can we do them both together or do we have to do them separately?
They can be together.
The approval of the minutes of May 11th and July 13th. Anyone make a motion to?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 11th and July 13th of 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
The only thing that is on the July 13th.
Yeah.
I think under a general approval, that's that says to approve the minutes under agenda approval.
Yeah.
Is that what you do under agenda approval? Yes, that's right. No?
You guys did it right.
Did it right, never mind.
Okay, okay. Now the regular agenda. Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facilities. This is a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. A city-initiated text amendment to the zoning code to prohibit Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facilities to the list of prohibited uses in all areas of the city.
Thank you. The item before you actually is going to be presented by our attorney that is present today, Tanya, with Glenn Torcivia's office. So I'd like to introduce her to you. She's working with Christie. You usually see Christie here at the meeting.
Yeah.
But Tanya is a colleague of Christie's and is here this evening for this item. So, Tanya?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, perfectly, thank you.
Wonderful. So, Madam Chair and members of the board, I will just again introduce myself. My name is Tanya Early and I'm here to talk to you about the proposed text amendments to Chapter 16, which is your zoning code. As many of you may know, the city has taken different positions at different times with regard to Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers and dispensaries, rather. Most recently, in 2020 pursuant to ordinance number 202002, the City Council made a determination that Medical Marijuana Treatment Dispensing Facilities should be allowed in certain areas of the city and that they should be allowed essentially in areas where pharmacies are allowed to operate. And that has been in place now, of course, since 2020. Recently, it is my understanding that the City Council directed staff to draft an ordinance amending ordinance 202002 to prohibit such facilities from operating in the city going forward. This particular amendment applies prospectively to new centers that would want to come into the city. It does not apply retroactively, meaning any center that's currently operating legally at the time that the ordinance passes is going to be allowed to continue legal operations as a non-conforming use. So there are different requirements within the code to allow a business to continue operating as a non-conforming use. But the bottom line is, as long as they continue their operations lawfully, they will not be affected by this new change in the law. What the change in the law would do is prevent these sorts of establishments from forming thereafter. So, any questions about that? I know that's kind of a 30,000-foot level broad brush description.
So basically, what you're saying is those facilities dispensing marijuana, et cetera, that are already existing, if they're within the law and within the zoning code, they can continue to operate, but the city is requesting that no further facilities like that be allowed to locate within the city?
Yes, that is exactly correct.
Karen, maybe you can answer this question?
Denise.
Denise, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can be a Karen and Karen. Tara, Karen. Yeah.
Are there existing?
We have two.
Excuse me, legal?
Two.
Two. Illegal? Do we know?
Not that we're currently aware of.
Okay.
Or that are in any active enforcement.
Places now. May I ask where they are?
Yeah, they're on Jog Road. They're both on Jog Road. One's across from Bud's and I looked them up. Bud's and one's on the other side of Jog and Lake Worth.
Lake Worth Road.
Yeah. They're both on Lake Worth Road. Thank you. I have a question. I don't know if this is the time to ask it or not, but why the change in attitude when? I remember going through this when we okayed those and it seemed like a no-brainer that this was okay. You know, that it had been tested and stuff. Have there been some bad things happening that we're changing our tune on this? I just wonder why the change?
I think they just started, you know, there's been some discussion of other minutes palates and things that have been going on. And I think it just conjured up a discussion with council and it became their desire to actually relook at it. And in doing so, they made the decision to go forward and just keep the two that we have and disallow, you know, that kind of use to be going forward.
We're not that big a city, so two's probably fine. Okay.
Can the existing places sell their licenses on their, if they like?
Oh, that's a good question.
That was my next question.
Right, well, at a very basic level, they can transfer ownership from one business to another as long as they're continually in that same business, in that same business model. It's not a problem. And again, there are specifics when it comes to non-conforming uses that we can talk about in a second. But I want to circle back to questions that, a question that was asked as to what was the driving force behind this change. And I will just add to that a little bit that I think there was also a concern that if the state of Florida were to outright legalize the use of marijuana, which it hasn't to date, but it could, that if we don't, if the city doesn't take some action to limit these sorts of establishments, that there could be a proliferation of retail sales of marijuana within the city. So a lot of times what the legislature does is when they pass a new law, they may say municipalities that have existing things on the books banning, whatever the legislature is now legalizing, they can continue under those new laws. I think there is, there was just a desire to look forward into the possibility of a world where marijuana is legalized under state law. So I will just add that as one of the possible motivating factors.
I have a question. Okay, that being said, and we've got this all on the books and legal marijuana becomes a thing here. Can we change our rules and decide to go with the flow?
Um.
Can we change things, you know?
Madam?
Yeah.
Madam Chair and board members, it's always easier to allow something that you haven't allowed before. The opposite is very hard. Once you allow something to exist, it's a lot more difficult to claw it back.
Makes a lot of sense.
Incredibly hard once the legislature gets involved and directs, you know, takes the position one way or another. So I think you can't always anticipate everything that's going to happen at the state level, but this was just something that was considered as a possibility and maybe one of the motivating factors, but not necessarily the motivating factor. Did that answer your question, board member?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to look at it, yeah.
Just back to the uses.
Yes.
The, we had talked about ownership only.
Yes, I'm gonna.
Limitations.
I will pull up the section on non-conforming uses in just a second and talk about it. But if there are not any more general questions, I did want, oh, there are. Yes, ma'am.
Whereas the City Council now believes it is in the best interest of the city to prohibit it. Okay. And you're saying that, well, there's not really a specific answer to that. It's that this may have been warranted. So there's no specific data that there's safety or, but that this might happen, so that's probably why. Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, again, I can't, I don't want to put words in the mouth of the City Council.
How about they've had a change of heart?
Yes, I would, I would phrase it that way. That they had, as a board, decided that this is how they wanted to direct staff to proceed.
I was only asking for something more specific, but obviously it is not available, so I accept what I have.
Thank you.
Denise, what is the recommendation of the?
Staff?
Yeah.
To proceed with adopting.
Yeah, I got it.
For this board to recommend approval to City Council to adopt the ordinance.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, this may be somewhat tedious, but because this is a text amendment, I would like to walk the board through the different areas of the text that would be changed in the event that it's approved by this board and by the City Council. So, beginning with the definitions in Section 16.1, that refers to the definition of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facility. That's a mouthful. So I'm going to call them dispensaries for short going forward. Basically, it keeps the definition that existed before, but it clarifies that these types of establishments are now prohibited within the city of green acres. You'll see there is a date in there that applies to the non-conforming uses. That date actually will change to the final adoption date of the ordinance. But right now, October 2nd is in there as a placeholder. So the next section that is changing is going to be Section 16-425 and that's prohibited uses for the Office Professional and Institutional District, whereas it had been, this language that you see in subsection 2 had been struck in ordinance 202002 and we're putting it back in to say that such facilities are not permitted. The same applies to the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District for Section 16.450, to the General Commercial District for Section 16.475, the Commercial Intensive District pursuant to Section 16500, the Mixed Development Districts pursuant to Section 16546, and Section 16.562, and Section 16577. In addition to that, this is not a zoning text amendment, but this is another, an amendment to another section of the code and I just wanted to make the board aware of that because it will be part of the ordinance. There is a general provision for miscellaneous offenses within the city and that's found in Chapter 9, Article 1, Division 1. And this particular chapter, article, and division would be amended to include the prohibition against operating marijuana dispensaries. So it's kind of supplemental to the changes to the zoning code, but it makes it clear that this sort of establishment is not permitted after the effective date of the ordinance. Again, as you'll see in subsection C, there is a date of October 7th, October 2nd, 2023 as a placeholder and that would be updated to the final, the final date of adoption of the ordinance. And you just, do you want to, if you have any questions for staff, perhaps, Madam Chair, the board may want to ask staff at this time, will I get that section pulled up? I apologize, I'm not good at walking and chewing gum.
I have a quick question.
Pull it up here? Oh, that would be great, thank you.
Denise, will this change in the ordinance be brought up at a City Council meeting?
Yes, after this, it will go towards.
Okay.
City Council, yes.
Will it be brought up this Monday, do you know?
It's not this Monday.
Okay.
It will be in October.
Okay.
And, yes.
Thank you, my internet went out too on top of everything else, so.
Let's see if we can get it back. Sorry, I'm not used to pulling it up this way. Okay, I just have to do it the long way. Okay. Tanya, the specific chapter, section?
I'm.
Okay.
Trying to locate it. Section 4?
1357.
Yeah.
So I have it up now.
Okay. For some reason, my screen is not working, so. Can you just bear with me one moment, please?
Section 16-1357.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can I come down and sit next to her because?
Yeah, use one of our.
No, I wouldn't, I would never. I wanted, I just, I can't see it in front of me, so. Thank you. In the meantime, if you have questions for staff. If not. Okay, so if you look at Section 16-1357, that is the section that controls non-conforming uses within the city. And the question that I received was actually, I believe, in reference to a change in owner. And it is my interpretation that a change in ownership is different than a change in use. So, a change in use would be if someone has a dispensary, they sell the property, a different business comes in that does something different altogether. If that happens, then they can't go back to that use. It's over, it's done. As far as a change in ownership of the business or a change in tenancy of the business only pursuant to subsection 4, it's going to run with the land, meaning it's going to run whoever, it doesn't matter who's there as long as the use never stops. So that's, that's how I'm reading that subsection. Is there anything?
Could it be? Would there be an ability to?
The, as of right.
Get to ownership?
As of right now, that's the way that the code reads. Could this code be modified in the future? Potentially. But as of now, that's, that is the language that we are living with, so.
Wouldn't necessarily prohibit it in the future. Isn't something that would keep it from that being able to be done in the future if there was a desire to do so?
Not, not necessarily. There are some things that we have to think about in terms of vested property interests and that's an area that I would be careful with. And what I would want to do is caution the board that if you're making a decision, you should make your decision based on what exists in the Code of Ordinances right now. Because as of right now, there is no planned change specifically in line for Section 16-1357.
Okay, so. It makes perfectly logical sense to make our decision, at least to me, to make our decision based on what is currently in code. All right, thank you.
Any other questions about this particular subsection or anything else before I head back? While I have access to the internet in front of me?
So basically, because I too remember when this was first passed, the change of hot by the City Council is to prevent there from becoming a proliferation of these facilities within the city. Not banning the use totally and making us one-sided, but just to prevent the city from becoming the hotbed of these facilities in the area, right?
Yes, I think yes, that is definitely.
However, excuse me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. However, that's specific is not in any of our paperwork. So it's not anything that could be ever claimed to be the specific reason.
Well, they don't have to.
Doesn't have to have a reason.
You don't have to have a reason.
You don't have to have a reason.
It could be.
I would, I only asked for some specifics as to why, as did someone else. So, and that was it. But that wasn't specific in what we have.
It could only be so specific.
That's okay, I understand, I accept.
Okay, okay. So, Madam Chair, if I may, the ordinance would come with it a number of, we call them whereas clauses for short, but they're basically a form of legislative finding. And right now, there are multiple legislative findings in this ordinance, but what I can do in the draft ordinance, but what I can do is add that language about the proliferation. I know that it's somewhere in the staff reports, but I can't recall off the top of my head which report it's in. We can add that to the whereas clauses and we can add a new section saying that the whereas clauses are incorporated as part of the ordinance and as part of the legislating, legislative findings of the City Council. And that way, it can be clear to anyone who pulls up the new ordinance at any point in the future, what the legislature was thinking at the time. Does that sound acceptable?
What would that sound like? I'm not sure we should do that. What would that sound like?
It would sound something, well, I don't want, I can't draft it right in front of you.
Okay, just, you know, we won't hold you to every word.
It would say something like to, whereas the, the city has concerns about a proliferation of dispensaries, we've decided to repeal ordinance 202002 and that it's in the best interest for the health, safety, welfare of the residents to do so. And it would be some kind of general language like that.
Should we be doing that or should the council be doing that? It'll be.
We would, we would be preparing it for the council. So the issues, Madam Chair, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering about, for tax purposes, if at this point, these facilities are taxed. They're not, it's not like a hospital or something that's, you know, or a church or a school. I'm just wondering if the state were to pass marijuana to be legal, if it would be considered a medical facility? Or are these considered medical facilities? And how do they stand as far as taxability?
Madam Chair, if I may, I can't answer that specific question about how they're taxed without doing further research.
Okay.
But what I would say is this, as a, as the Planning and Zoning Board, your task essentially is to look at these text amendments and decide whether or not you want to recommend approval of them to the City Council. As far as the legislative intent, that's something that could be added into the document and that's something that the City Council will have to vote on.
Exactly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you think that that's appropriate? That addition?
Madam Chair, if I may, it's, it's, it's not inappropriate and it's not language that isn't existing right now in one form or another. So it can be crafted in such a way that it's easy to understand and appropriate. And at that point, it would be presented before the City Council for consideration.
Wow. Well. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
We're not overstepping our bounds, boundaries, are we, by suggesting this?
By suggesting additional legislative findings?
Yeah.
How, let me, let me say this. Your task is to approve the text amendments. That is your task today.
As presented.
As presented. However, I am happy to take your feedback and incorporate that into the document, into the draft that goes to City Council.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say our duty is to approve, you mean to approve or disapprove?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Make a decision.
Thank you.
Right, so let, I'm, I think, let me be more precise with my language. To either recommend that the City Council approve the text amendments as presented or to recommend that the City Council use some other language than what has been presented to you or to recommend outright disapproval of the change to the zoning code.
And, just to clarify, whatever our recommendation is, whether it's approval, disapproval, or moderation, we are not the final say, it goes before the City Council and they make up their own mind, no matter what we say. That's right.
You're recommended, recommendation body to the council.
Yeah. Are we ready to take a vote on this or?
I would open it for public comment, Madam Chair.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none. Any, any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion from the board? So.
Motion?
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to vote on?
I move to approve it as written.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So it's unanimous?
So you don't want to make any change? No. Okay, well, I, well, I'm going to want to overstep our.
Any further?
Boundaries with them.
Anything else, or we have a motion to adjourn?
So, I just, and I don't have to go over any of the comp plan evaluation and appraisal review, I can get as detailed as you want. I just wanted to let it be known that we actually will be coming before you next month with the transmittal documents, so it'll actually have all of the goals, objectives, and policy language that we're looking to do the changes to. So I just wanted to let you know about that, and in general.
And when will that meeting be? When will that meeting be?
It'll be your meeting, September meeting. So it is, up the top of my.
No, October? We're in September, October.
I'm sorry, October. I feel like we shouldn't even be in September yet. The exact date would be October 12th.
Thank you.
October 12th, okay.
So you will see the language, you know, more specifically, the actual strike-through, underline language, where strike-through are those items being deleted, language being deleted, underline, language being added. And you'll see it in its entirety, it's going to be luminous, but that you'll see, once you start going through the strike-through, underline language, it's manageable. So I just wanted to let you know that that's forthcoming, and if you had any questions regarding that at this time, I can answer them. But we will be doing a presentation of those materials at the next meeting.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make.
Sorry.
I make a motion to adjourn.